Good evening, everybody. Going to go ahead and call to order the Bristol, Virginia City Council for today, May the 9th, 2023. Please join me in observing a moment of silence. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
One Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, I'm glad to see everybody out. We have got a long agenda full of a lot of important agenda items, so we will move right into council comments.
I would like to say, I got a couple of things real quick. I'll try to be brief. Good evening, everyone. Something we should have brought up at the last meeting. I feel like I'm very loud. Dr. Karen Shelton, a Bristol native, was recently tasked by the governor to be the chief health commissioner for the state. She went to Virginia High with some of these folks up here. She's worked very hard in our region. She was the local health district leader as well as during the pandemic. She took over two additional health districts. So she's done a phenomenal job for our region already. She has a great heart for serving the citizens of our region, but now she's taking that to the greater state of the whole state. So it's exciting, exciting to see that and exciting to see her do so well. So if you happen to see her out and about, congratulate her and thank her for what she does. And then, second one, if you guys don't mind. This week is Teacher Appreciation Week. I hope if you have a teacher in your life or you know a couple, know your neighbor's a teacher, please thank them for their service, thank them for what they do. It's often a thankless job. They do a whole lot with just a little bit, and we greatly appreciate that. So this is a great week to celebrate them. Thank you.
All right. City manager's comments.
Yeah, sure. I have a few comments tonight. First, I want to say that I've had the opportunity to meet with the new city manager for Bristol, Tennessee, Kelly Bouchois. And we plan on, this past Wednesday, and we plan on having lunch together on Friday to discuss how we can move our cities forward in the future and make sure that we have one strong community for the entire Bristol area. Also, pleased to announce that we will have two new city engineers beginning on May the 22nd. Those positions have been vacant for quite some time, so we have those filled, and two city engineers will be starting here shortly. Third, one thing that's important, I think unfortunately, we see too many instances of this across the United States of where it's now become commonplace that you see an active shooter scene. And in order to prepare for an active shooter, you have to train. And on April the 15th, the fire department, the police department, we did an unannounced active shooter drill at Van Pelt Elementary School. And that was just really to test their time to get to a scene in the event something happens and just some of the things that you have to be prepared for when that happens. So we plan on doing another drill here shortly in the month of June, and we're going to continue to drill on a regular basis for active shooter training. I think it's, unfortunately, it's all too real for us that there is an opportunity for an active shooter, whether it be at a school or whether it be at some outdoor event. We have to be prepared. Our staff has to be prepared, and we have to know how to handle that when and if that happens. I hope it doesn't happen, but it's something that we need to be prepared for. Finally, I'm pleased to announce that we are going to work on starting a Citizens Solid Waste Advisory Committee. And this committee will be comprised of citizens of Bristol, Virginia. There will be an application process, and members will be appointed by council. The bylaws will be developed by city staff and approved by the committee and the council. The meeting schedule will be public and available on the website, but there will be no public comment, and it will not be videoed. It is a working committee for the citizens of the city of Bristol, Virginia. There will be a council representative and staff liaisons, but those individuals will not be voting members of the committee. And the committee directives will be set by council and will be related to the Solid Waste Disposal Fund budget. This committee will prepare and present a report to council twice per fiscal year beginning in January of 2024. We're excited to move this forward and expect to have the application process to begin in early July of 2024.
Very good. Thank you very much. Next, we'll move into matters to be presented by members of the public for non-agenda items. So we had a couple of people sign up, and I'll just kind of explain the process. So when you come up to the microphone, state your name, where you're from. When the light comes on, the green light comes on, you have three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you have 10 seconds. Is that correct?
Yellow is 30 seconds.
Yellow light is 30 seconds. Then when the red light comes on, you're out of time. So just try and maintain the three-minute maximum if you can. And if you run out of time when you're in a thought, you know, just wrap it up as soon as you can. First person is Glenda Smith. And as you're coming up, I'll just say, I know you signed up for an agenda and a non-agenda, so you'll get called a second time for the agenda item, so this is just for your non-agenda thing.
Okay. So the agenda item was the budget, right?
Yeah, so we'll call you back up a second time for that, so.
Okay. My name's Glenda Smith, and I live in the Yuculud Historic District. And I wanted to say that I've been, oops, I'm sorry, I've been a resident of Virginia since 1982. My family has been in the Abingdon, Kingsport, and Elizabeth area since the 1700s, and I feel heavily invested and have deep roots here. And I've been active in trying to participate in a positive way to this community in any way I can. Right now, the most looming issue is obviously the mass debt created by the choices made by people who have occupied this room in the past. The community is upset and justifiably so. We elected most of you recently with the expectation that things would be different. We need answers about how you justify purchases like golf carts when we are $53 million in debt. I know you said that the golf cart is self-sustaining now as a result of membership drives, but what if this happens, it doesn't continue to grow? You've also added staff. I feel, well, this might be for the budget, but council needs to do what the rest of us do. Stop spending, liquidate your assets, trim the fat, and make better choices and find new ways to make money. Honest taxpaying citizens, well, I guess that's for the other part.
It's okay.
It's just...
You can do it all now if you want to, or even want to wait to the agenda item.
I'll just do it because it's kind of not on topic either. Honest taxpaying citizens are fed up with the waste and looking the other way. We have laws on the books right now that are not being enforced and fees that are not being collected. Large number of Bristol residents live here without paying taxes to the city or the state as well as other fees. Please don't leave our money on the table and be more careful how you spend what we've already given you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next person who has signed up for a non-agenda item is Mr. Smith.
My name is Victor Smith. I think my wife put me in for a speech, and I'm not much of a speaker. But my subject matter is about buttercups and neighbors who live adjoining your property do not take care of it. And I have one, and I gave pictures to one of your people. They're going to read it and show it to you tomorrow.
Okay.
Hopefully, somebody will get rid of the buttercups. There's only about three acres of them, and there's two horses. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. All right. So that is the last person who has signed up for a non-agenda item. So next thing is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
All right. Motion to adopt the agenda by Mr. Farnham, second by the vice mayor. Please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. All right, into the regular agenda. Item one, resolution in support of the Bristol, Tennessee, or the Bristol Train Station Foundation and their plans to raise financial support for capital improvements and programming for the Bristol Train Station. Nobody has signed up for public comments. Staff report.
Counsel, rail service came to Bristol in 1856. Rail service came to Bristol in 1856 with the last train providing regular passenger service in 1971. As council is aware, it was recently announced that passenger rail service will be returning to the Twin Cities. In preparation for this event, the Bristol Train Station Foundation has undertaken a campaign to renovate and improve our iconic train station for the benefit of the community and many visitors who enjoy many of the cultural and natural treasures of our region. This resolution formalizes city council's support for the Bristol Train Station Foundation and its plans to raise financial support for capital improvements and programming for the Bristol Train Station. This facility has been central to the establishment and growth of both Bristol, Tennessee and Bristol, Virginia since 1856. The stone and brick passenger station is significant as one of the last surviving examples of outstanding structures built by Norfolk and Western Railway. Since 1999, it has been maintained for public use under the ownership of the Bristol Train Station Foundation, a nonprofit organization.
All right. Thank you. Next is reading of the resolution.
A resolution supporting the Bristol Train Station Foundation, whereas rail service first reached Bristol in 1856 and continued successfully through the Civil War until 1971, when the last passenger train completed its journey. And whereas during that period, the Twin Cities saw tremendous economic growth due to the railroad and its ability to ship resources such as iron and coal from our communities to other parts of a growing nation. And whereas the stone and brick passenger station is significant as one of the last surviving examples of a series of outstanding structures built by Norfolk and Western Railway and has been central to the establishment and growth of communities of Bristol, Tennessee and Bristol, Virginia. And whereas since 1999, it has been maintained under the ownership of the Bristol Train Station Foundation, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization for the benefit of the public. And whereas it was recently announced that passenger rail service will be returning to the Twin Cities. And whereas in preparation for this event, the Bristol Train Station Foundation has undertaken a campaign to renovate and improve our iconic train station for the benefit of many visitors to the region. And whereas the City Council of Bristol, Virginia recommends supporting the Bristol Train Station Foundation and their plans to raise financial support for capital improvements and programming for the Bristol Train Station, which has been vital in the development of our unique heritage. Now therefore be it resolved by the City of Bristol, Virginia, that the city supports the efforts of the Bristol Train Station Foundation in their campaign to renovate and improve the historic Bristol Train Station for the continued enjoyment of our citizens and those who will come to enjoy the beauty of our mountains and communities, rich in natural and cultural treasures. Whereupon, the mayor declared the resolution adopted and affixed a signature on this the 9th day of May, 2023.
All right. Thank you very much. Looking for a motion and a second to take action.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the resolution as read.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Farnham, second by Mr. Holmes. Council discussion. Well, I'll just say, you know, it has been a longstanding goal, not just of mine, but of I think every member probably up here, to see passenger rail service return to Bristol. You know, as you see the federal government making larger investments in infrastructure and in rail, you know, you don't want to be left, you know, left out on that. So I think this is a great opportunity for us to support what the train station is doing and try to get rail back and try to raise money to be prepared, you know, from an infrastructure standpoint, when the rail service does come back. So, you know, I'm excited about this. You know, I'll say, you know, to Mr. Pollard, I know he is our rep on the Train Station Foundation Board. You know, I know he has been in discussion with them on this resolution, so I appreciate your efforts to get this organized and in front of us. And I look forward to riding a train from Bristol soon. Hearing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. Item two, approval of award to Product Recovery Management Incorporated for landfill permit number 588, landfill liquids treatment system bid SW23-016. Staff report.
The invitation for bids for the landfill permit number 588 landfill liquids treatment system IFB SW23-016 was issued on April 19th, 2023 with proposals due at 2:00 p.m. on May 1st, 2023. One response was received. It is recommended that IFB SW23-016 be awarded to Product Recovery Management Incorporated. This bid is for the interim equipment, not to be utilized more than three months from delivery until a more permanent system can be installed. You can see the previous RFP SW23-013 was previously awarded to Product Recovery Management on April the 11th, 2023. The total base bid price is $267,500 with $86,275 of optional equipment. Based upon staff review and the advice of our engineers related to the rental of optional equipment, the total price will be $331,175. This price includes installation of the equipment except for the power feed work, which we will do in-house. Staff would recommend the city council approve the award and give the city manager or his designee the authority to negotiate and enter into a contract with Product Recovery Management.
All right. Thank you. Looking for a motion and a second to take action on this.
I move that we approve the award to Product Recovery Management.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Holmes, second by Mr. Pollard. Council discussion.
I wish these prices weren't as high as they are, but we've got to do what we've got to do. We've got to take care of the landfill that we inherited.
It would be nice. I do have a question. So on the total price, you said it includes installation except for the power feed work, which we're doing.
Right.
So is this, if this number is locked in, so are they being paid hourly or is this a contract rate that they will?
This is a contract rate.
Okay. This is the highest it can go for?
That's what the bid is for, yes.
Okay. Hearing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. Item three is the quarterly financial update, and I believe the staff report is from our CFO.
I'm pleased to report the financial results for the first nine months of the fiscal year. I did cover these results with the Finance Committee earlier. Last week, we actually had that meeting and covered these results. So first, we'll go over the financial summary. Keep in mind that these figures are on a cash basis. Then we'll move into the general fund and review revenues and expenditures. Then we'll move to the Solid Waste Disposal Fund, again, reviewing revenues and expenditures. We'll look at how the operating cash stands as well as the history on the operating cash. And then we'll give an update on the fall phases two and three. And then I have a few more items that I'll cover at the end, just give you an update on some other things. So as far as the financial summary, you'll see the general fund, and this is the real numbers. This would be the bottom line impact on the budget and the actual. So on the general fund, you'll see that we budgeted revenues of about $56 million through nine months or 75% of the year for comparison purposes. We're at a little over $44 million collected year-to-date. On the expenditure side, a budget of about $60 million and actual expenditures of $43 million. You can see we've only spent 72% of the expenditure budget. Departments are doing a really good job with cost control, and then there are some other items that we'll discuss a little bit later that make that up. Just to note, property taxes, as we've discussed in the past, make up a little over a third of the general fund revenues. So obviously, strength in property taxes is going to really pull us through as we move forward. We have collected 68% of that budget. The billing that we just processed will be due June the 5th, so you should see an uptick in property taxes. Get into a little more detail in a later slide. Solid Waste Fund, you can see that we are at 42% on revenues. As you know, the disposal side revenue ceased in September, and you'll see those percentages in a later slide. On the expenditure side, we have spent 80% of that budget. That's primarily due to some professional services. And as you know, we have a number of work orders that we are having to implement, so that comprises that 80%. Right now, we stand at a net loss of $2.9 million on a cash basis. As we've discussed previously, we will be transferring some general fund monies over to Solid Waste. We'll true that up by year-end. You can expect that number to go quite a bit larger in the red. Transit Fund, this is primarily grant-funded, so little impact to the city's general fund. We are at 64% of revenues in transit and 53% on expenditure side. Some of the revenues that came in this year were actually for last fiscal year, so that's why the revenues are higher than the expenditures. Moving to Capital Projects, the fund that is locally funded, which is primarily equipment for various departments. We have transferred that money from the general fund to the Capital Projects Fund, so that's why that's at 100%. On the expenditure side, we only spent 54%. The reason for that is that there was a large amount that was budgeted for police cars. We're going to be rolling some of that money over to 2024 to help with funding police cars during the new budget. Also, we have an amount in there for building maintenance for a number of reasons. We've not spent that money. We're going to roll that over as well because we always have recurring building maintenance projects that need to be done. We do have, we've spent about half of the fire PPNE, and we have about $22,000 left in that fund of encumbered monies for fire PPNE. So the timing on that seems to be delayed, so whatever's not spent on the fire PPNE, again, will be rolled over because of the annual costs that they have to incur. State and federal funding, capital projects. So we have, Jake's here if you have any in-depth questions, but we have a number of road and bridge projects that were budgeted, and there are several projects that, for a number of reasons, were delayed. About three of those projects are in process. One is complete. One project, Piedmont Avenue and State Street pedestrian signal, we did not receive any bids. We have a myriad of reasons that we've not spent those monies. Some have been turned back over to VDOT, and so there are laws, you know, further delays. We have rebudgeted a number of these in the 2024 budget, so hopefully, as we get the engineers on staff and we get, hopefully, VDOT rolling on some of these projects, you'll see some activity in FY 2024. Moving a little more in-depth on the revenue side for the general fund, you can see that from local sources, we have collected 80% of those revenues. Again, that's primarily your taxes, your property taxes, restaurant meals, those sorts of things, local sales tax. Revenue coming from the Commonwealth, which does include TVA, 77% is collected. I don't see any concerns there. We should reach our budget. Revenue from the federal government is at only 70%. The reason for that being lower than, like, if you look at it on a straight-line basis, which it doesn't really operate on a straight-line basis, but the largest source of the federal revenue is the Department of Social Services, and their expenditures are down for the year, so they get reimbursed from state and federal government, so the reimbursements are down. So that has an offsetting savings on the expenditure side. Nothing to be concerned about. As far as other financing sources, that's primarily where, you can see, we're over budget. That's primarily the sale of property. We've had a couple of property sales that, those are one-time, obviously, because you can only sell the property once, but total revenues, 79% of budget. And like I said, on property taxes, as those revenues come in from the most recent billing, you'll see that local sources increase. Now we'll dive down a little bit deeper on the local sources, so you can see all of the components. You can see we've collected about 68% of property taxes, and again, we'll have more money coming in before year-end. Other local taxes, we're at 88%, so that's very strong. Permits and privilege fees, 81%. Fines, 85%. Revenue from money and property, that's 685% collected. That's great, but that's a very small line item in the budget, so it's a $79,000 line item budget. That's primarily because our interest earnings are high because of how the interest rate environment is currently. Charges for services, that's very strong due to increases in the golf revenues. As you know, you injected some money into some marketing, and we've reaped some additional revenues from that effort. Parks and Rec revenues are up as well, so we've collected almost 91% of the budget through nine months. Miscellaneous revenue, that's where the sale of land is classified, and the recovered cost is primarily where we've received some insurance monies for damages and for, you know, vehicle accidents and that sort of thing. And you've already seen the state and federal revenue. I just wanted to show you a little more detail on the local side. On the, as far as the division between the local, state, and federal revenues, you can see that 68% to date has come in from local sources, which means we're collecting those taxes, and the city is taking care of 68% of expenses so far solely. The state is so far through the year taking care of about a fourth of our expenses, and then the federal government, the other 6%. And the 1% is just other funding sources. Looking at target revenue, this takes a straight-line approach to these different categories. Obviously, we don't operate on a straight line, especially local sales tax, restaurant meals tax, and those sorts of things, as, you know, they will vary throughout the year based on activities going on, you know, Christmas sales, things like that. On a straight-line basis, you can see that we're 14% over what the straight-line nine-month figure would be. The largest dollar value positive here is local sales tax, and then that's followed up by the restaurant meals tax and lodging taxes. The next slide shows a year-to-year. This is nine months last year compared to nine months this year, which is a little better picture of how we stand year-to-date. You can see that sales and use tax were up 20%, consumer utility tax, 9%. It doesn't really reap a lot of dollar value at $11,000, but still yet, it's positive. The cigarette tax, we've talked about that several times. We talk about that a lot in the Finance Committee meeting. What we're seeing is a continuing decline in cigarette tax. I would attribute that to the move from cigarettes to vaping, so we don't, you know, obviously, we're not going to sell those stamps, cigarette stamps, if people are vaping. So this is an area we're probably going to continue to see declines as people move away from the cigarettes. Lodging tax is up 16%. Lodging tax is up 16%. Restaurant meals tax up 9% year-over-year. Admissions tax, 147%. Again, this is not a big dollar value, however, it is positive, so anything positive, we'd like to see. Overall, for these specific categories in aggregate, you can see that we're up 12% over the prior year. I will say that the budget was prepared fairly conservative, so if you ask, how does this 12% compare to the budget? The budget was fairly flat in aggregate for these categories, so the 12% you can take to the bank, and we are certainly going to need that in the 2024 budget. What we've done in the 2024 budget is we've tried to take every line item and just squeeze as much as we can out of those revenue figures, so it's going to be tight next year. There's not a lot of room. You can see in picture form here how we've trended for the last six years on local sales and use tax. Obviously, going up is a great direction. Restaurant meals tax, a lot of these, you can see the dip in 2020 when we had COVID, but then it recovered nicely, almost as if, you know, COVID didn't occur. It's a nice straight trend line there. Lodging tax is in a good upward trend as well. And you can see the communications tax is continuing to decline. That's the tax on cable and satellite, and I would imagine as people are moving away from those methods of getting their entertainment, that they're moving to some areas that are not taxed by the communications tax. Consumer utility tax is fairly steady. It's very, very slight growth. Electric consumption tax is fairly flat. Okay, you can see the cigarette tax here. It's up, and now it's down, and it's trending down, and will likely continue to trend down. Taxes on recreation and will, that just depends on how many deeds and so forth primarily are recorded, deeds, contracts, legal agreements, those sorts of things. So obviously, if you have a lot of deed activity, this revenue is going to go up, and likewise, if you don't have a lot of activity. Admissions tax is fairly flat. And then what the next series of slides will pick is your three-year average, and in all these cases, the three-year average is on the bottom line, which is a good place to be because you want to be, you want your current to be higher than what the three-year average is. So you can see that the line on the top, which is the current fiscal year, pretty much is, at least in the last three months, is mirroring what the three-year average is. So that uptick in February is that two-month lag for the local sales tax for Christmas. Restaurant meals tax, again, your current year is above the three-year average. It kind of gets close in the month of March, but I would anticipate that that will continue to show some really good growth. Lodging taxes, you can see the big spike in October. There is a one-month delay on lodging taxes, so this would have been from September activity is what spiked in October. So moving on to general fund expenditures, you can see in total, we're at 72% of our budget for the year, so like I said, the departments are doing a really good job except for the city attorney, but that's a joke. We're doing a really good job. We cannot help any of that. That is something that we have no control over, and we continue to make adjustments and continue to try to work these expenses down as we can. Government administration is where the legal fees are lying, and hopefully, we can do our best to kind of minimize those, but they are a fact of life right now. You can see in all of these areas that we have really good cost controls in place, and the departments are doing a really good job. I really don't see anything unreasonable come across my desk, and I'm sure the city manager would echo that. We do have $2 million year-to-date in professional services. The social services, you can see under Health, Welfare, and Social Services, that is down. That's at 72%. That's where I mentioned that we have the revenue softness as well. Those just offset. This slide shows how much of the budget is consumed by each of these broad categories. So you see Public Safety is at 27% of the entire spending for nine months through the year. This does include Police, Fire, Sheriff's Department, Animal Control, as well as some other smaller departments. Health, Welfare, and Social Services takes up the next largest portion of the budget at 16%. Education comes in at 12%, and then you can see the rest of the departments there. Moving to the Solid Waste Disposal Fund, on the revenue side, you can see we're at 42%. If you move up to disposal operating revenue, that one is done for the year. We ceased taking those revenues in September, so we're sort of in a pattern of no revenues now on disposal side. Collection revenues, we are at 79% of budget, and so those are holding their own. The other financing sources, that includes interest income. It's not a large number, as you can see. This includes interest income and then the sale of some assets. Transfers in, so we budgeted in 2023 to transfer in from the general fund $1.5 million. As I said earlier, we're going to true that up. The number will be larger, so we're going to do our best to ensure that we do cover the solid waste fund's expenditures. Solid waste expenditures, on the disposal side, you can see we've spent 87% of our budget. Utilities are at 138% of budget. They're 150,000 over budget on utilities. Our work order expense, which, you know, we've talked a lot about all of these various work orders that we're having to implement at the landfill. So work order expense has us at 190% of our budget on the disposal side, or 540,000 over budget. Those are going to continue to increase, and we'll continue reporting those to you as time goes by. We had $600,000 in the budget for professional services, and the latest projection shows about $3.4 million for the work orders. That does not include capital, just work orders. So overall, we're at 80% on expenditures for the total solid waste fund. So moving to operating cash, we are at just under $27 million on operating cash, of which $1.4 million is the solid waste disposal fund, and you can see how it's grown over time. We do still maintain the general fund reserve of $1.5 million, as well as a debt service reserve of $3.2 million. And here you can see the five-year history on the operating cash. You can see the dip in January, February, March. That's entirely attributable to solid waste. So moving to Fall, Phases Two and Three, where do we stand currently? We budgeted revenues of $820,000 and debt of $3.1 million, and then we had the Washington County Revenue Sharing Obligation of $350,000 for a budgeted deficit of $2.7 million. Through nine months, we are $608,000 on revenue. We have paid out 69% of our debt, or $2.1 million, and we've paid out $61,000 in the revenue sharing, which is ending this year. So through nine months, we have a deficit for Falls of $1.6 million. So it's not going to be, it's not going to be to the same level as the budget, so we're going to, we're going to show some favorable figures here. And finally, on ARPA, as you know, the reporting for ARPA is going to go on for several years. We completed our sixth submission to the federal government on reporting out of 21 total reports. To date, we showed spending of $2.5 million of the $10 million in ARPA funds. $1.3 million of that was the jail, and the rest of that is going to be spent for solid waste projects. The budget, you know, we're very, very deep into the budget. You'll have first reading of the ordinance tonight, and hopefully, second reading will transpire on May the 23rd, and then we will have a final budget if all goes well. On the audit, the auditors will, seems like they just left, but they'll be back with us next week and be doing some preliminary fieldwork. They've already sent us a list of items that they need, so we'll look forward to working with them this year. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to address those.
Thank you very much. I'll go ahead and open it up. Too many questions we have for the CFO.
I'll just jump in and say, I don't have any direct questions, but I think it's interesting. One of my favorite parts is when you have the revenues, the entire list of all the different categories of tax revenues, and my favorite ones to look at are the local sales and use, restaurant meals, and lodging. Now, those three are the biggest ones as far as dollar amount, but I think it's interesting to look at to kind of see. So these numbers were from July 1st, 2022, to the end of March now, and in the beginning of July, a large attraction opened in Bristol, the Bristol Casino, future home of Hard Rock. So, you know, obviously, there's no hotels out there yet, but, and it's tough, too, to see, you know, when a visitor comes in, you know, what part of that is going to meals tax, to local sales and use tax. It's hard to break it up, you know, is this money at a restaurant being spent from a resident, which is money that's already here, or is it coming in from outside? We can sort of see that with lodging taxes because that's, that number's going up. So it's reported that, you know, when the casino makes revenue from the gaming tax, how much gaming tax comes back to Southwest Virginia, and, but I think it's important to know that we're seeing some other revenues from that through lodging, meals, and local sales and use. So I'm optimistic that that'll continue to grow over the next few years, obviously with more hotel rooms, more restaurants out there, but also in other parts of the city,
What I thought was interesting is that apparently, we get a lot of general sales and sales tax revenue associated with the fall race, because there was a huge spike last October reflecting the, which was presumably reflecting the September race, because it pretty well tracked with the lodging tax increase for that month. I had no idea that we're making that much in general sales over the race. Lodging, we could expect. I thought that was interesting.
And I think, I think you can see from the, from the slide, I'm a bar graph guy, so I like the, I think you could see from that slide the giant spike in lodging tax from September stuff, and I think that's, you know, indicative of the race and rhythm and roots both happening, you know, two weekends in a row. I also thought it was interesting on the bar graph slides, I think it was, I think it was the COVID year budget, the cigarette tax just went way up. Everybody was just stressed out at home, they all went and started smoking. I guess, but, you know, I think there's, you know, obviously, we have a lot of, a lot of financial challenges, you know. I think there, you know, there's some highlights, you know, we've got almost $27 million operating cash balance, and, you know, we maintain our emergency reserve and our debt reserve. I think those are some positive things. So I appreciate this presentation. I appreciate when you, when you do these quarterly updates. I appreciate you being able to break it down in several different ways, so, you know, we can understand it, the public can understand it, people watching at home and anyone else who's interested can understand it, make it accessible to everyone, so, so we do appreciate it.
I have one more question, and we've talked about this a little bit with our DMO and tourism, but our lodging tax numbers are up, and we don't have any more hotel rooms yet as compared to the previous year? So I think someone once told me for hotels to, you know, at least break even, their rooms need to be 50% full, you know. So I don't know, I think some of ours before, years ago, were, you know, 40, 50, 60%. Is there a way to find out what our occupancy rate is on an average night for hotels just in Bristol, Virginia, not in the whole area? You know, are they 70, are they 80? Because obviously, the revenues are higher than last year.
Yes, we can, yes, we can get that information from Discover Bristol, or we have somebody who probably can get that information a little bit quicker.
Yeah, I know we've discussed it before, but I was just wondering what the most recent numbers are.
Yeah, we have, we get that report, so I can share it, or you can also check with Discover Bristol. I just have one question, and I know you've answered this in the past, but I couldn't think what it could be, but first, thank you for that financial update. I do appreciate that. On the part back towards the beginning, when you were talking about VDOT and the funds that we turned back over to VDOT, is there a reason when we do that, like, why we're turning them back over? Is it because we didn't, like, was it grant funds?
It's the projects. Instead of us completing the project in-house with staff or, you know, we have had some staffing challenges, and Jake can probably answer that much better than I can, but some of the projects, we've just requested that VDOT just take the lead on the project. It's not that we're not getting, we're not turning funding back over.
Gotcha.
Do you have anything to add, Jake?
No, that's correct.
And then they completed the program? Yeah. Okay. That was just wanting to clarify. Thank you.
I just want to say, I want to appreciate your work on this. I also appreciate where the departments have been trying to not spend the full budgets, try to cut back where possible. I know the property sales also, that was up in the budget, or then the report, and I appreciate that. I know there were some citizen comments about selling what we don't need, getting rid of what we don't have to have, and I think that's a good approach right now especially, so I appreciate where you've been at.
Yeah, just to piggyback off that, I will say on the, on the expenditures chart, you know, aside from, aside from our legal fees, which falls under the, you know, government administration, you know, all of, I'll just brag on our departments, all of our departments are at or below the 75% benchmark, benchmark for where we should be at that point, you know, in the fiscal year, so I think that's, that's a testament to tightening our belt, watching our wallet, whatever analogy you want to use. I think that's a testament to the departments, you know, keeping a very close eye on where their money is going, so I appreciate that. Hearing no further discussion, and thank you very much again. We'll move into first reading of the ordinances. I'm going to ask, before we jump into this, there was one person who'd signed up for public comment and just put, for agenda item, put ordinances first reading, and that's Ms. Waldron. So which, which item were you wanting to speak on?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
Oh, that's fine. So for your agenda item, you didn't specify which ordinance you wanted to talk on? Was there, was there a specific one?
Seven.
Number seven?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So first one, first ordinance is, one, an ordinance to vacate all of a certain public right-of-way in the city of Bristol, Virginia. No public comments on that one, so staff report.
Counsel, Virginia Code 15.2 hyphen 2006 requires that the vacating of a public right-of-way requires advertising of such request in a public hearing. The city council shall then consider the request to vacate the right-of-way by ordinance. Attached, you will find in the ordinance to vacate a public right-of-way along the drawing of its location. This request is being made by Roger Williams, Wanda Williams, and Rodney Williams, which owns the adjoining properties to the east and west of this segment of the unopened and unimproved alley. This request has followed the procedure to vacate the right-of-way. A petition's been filed, and the public hearing advertised on April 25th. A petition's been filed, and the public hearing advertised on April twenty-fifth and May second, two thousand and twenty-three. The request has been circulated to other departments and to BBU. Attached are copies of the petition, declaration of understanding, and a drawing showing the location of the request and a copy of the ordinance for the first reading. Staff recommends that the city council vacate the public right-of-way as shown on the attached drawing. There are no existing or proposed utilities on this segment of the unopened and unimproved right alley. Therefore, it is recommended that no utility easements will be retained by the city.
All right, thank you very much. So I'm going to look for a motion, second, for first reading of the ordinance, and I'll just say, on all of these ordinance first readings, they can be in full or by caption only. So I'm looking for a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion to approve the reading of the first ordinance by caption only.
Second.
Okay, so a motion for the first reading by the vice mayor, second by Mr. Holmes, and that's for caption only. Council discussion.
I was just going to say, I don't see any issue with this. This is an unopened or undeveloped right-of-way, and, and the actual, the applicant actually owns property on both sides, so in a way, it, it makes sense. I don't see any, any issues on the city side.
I see that there's also unopened alley on the other side. Is that something that we would just wait for the adjoining property owners to request?
Yes.
Do you know if there are, is any use? Because this was, appears to have been intended as a utility easement.
I don't think it's ever been used.
It seems to me to be one of those cases where the city took an easement that may not, may or may not have been necessary, but in any case, it's not necessary now, so let's let the property owner have full use of their property. And at the same time, since this is a right-of-way that will become the owner's responsibility, we'll get a little, a little bit of additional real estate taxes off of it as well. So it seems like a win-win. They get fuller use of their own property, and we get a little bit of additional revenue off of it.
Hearing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. Reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Ordinance twenty-three hyphen thirteen, ordinance to vacate a portion of an unopened and unimproved public right-of-way.
All right, thank you. Ordinance two, an ordinance to amend chapter sixty-six to the city code pertaining to personnel, ordinance twenty-three dash seven. No one has signed up for public comment. Staff report.
Uh, council, chapter sixty-six of the city code of Bristol, Virginia establishes the rules and regulations governing personnel matters in the city. Chapter sixty-six of the code has been updated by ordinance from time to time as necessary over the years, but still remains largely as it did in nineteen sixty-six. The intention of this ordinance is to create an active and functional personnel policy handbook that can be amended as needed with council approval in a timely manner without the necessity of adopting an ordinance approving the amendment. The personnel policy handbook would be adopted by reference as if it were fully incorporated within the code. Prior to the end of each fiscal year, the city manager and/or his designee will present this personnel policy handbook to the city council for review and approval. I would like to thank our human resource director, Angie Blevins, for all the work she's done on this. She has kind, worked with the outside consultant on making sure that our personnel policies are up to date and what they should be for a functioning local government. She's spent a significant amount of time on this, and I think this will be a, a good way for us to move forward instead of us having personnel policies in ordinance that would just be in a personnel policy handbook.
All right, thank you. Looking for a motion and a second to take action on this.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve this ordinance to amend chapter sixty-six as stated.
Second.
To clarify, are those motions for first reading in full or by caption only?
Yes, for first reading by caption only is the motion.
Thank you, and is your second for caption only?
Yes.
Okay. So a motion by Mr. Farnham, second by the vice mayor. Council discussion.
I'll just say that, thank you, Angie, for really reviewing these as it states in here. It still remains as it did in nineteen sixty-six, and so a lot of things have changed, and I think it makes sense for it to go into the policy handbook versus being, and, you know, an ordinance that was made or part of the, to the city code. So I just, I wanted to say thank you for that.
We appreciate your work on it. I know it's, you know, you jumped in headfirst, you know, when you came into your department, so, so we appreciate it, and, and this has probably been a big undertaking, and developing a handbook will be a good undertaking, so, so we appreciate it. Hearing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. First reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Ordinance twenty-three hyphen seven, an ordinance to repeal section sixty-six hyphen twenty-six, sixty-six hyphen twenty-seven, sixty-six hyphen twenty-eight, sixty-six hyphen twenty-nine, sixty-six hyphen thirty, sixty-six hyphen forty-two, sixty-six hyphen forty-three, sixty-six hyphen forty-four, sixty-six hyphen forty-five, I wish there's another way to have done this one, sixty-six hyphen fifty-one, sixty-six hyphen fifty-two, sixty-six hyphen fifty-three, sixty-six hyphen fifty-four, sixty-six hyphen fifty-five, sixty-six hyphen fifty-six, sixty-six hyphen fifty-seven, sixty-six hyphen eighty-two, sixty-six eighty-three, sixty-six hyphen eighty-four, sixty-six hyphen eighty-five. Article four, employee incentive bonus program, sixty-six hyphen one oh six, sixty-six hyphen one oh seven, sixty-six hyphen one oh eight, sixty-six hyphen one oh nine, sixty-six hyphen one ten, sixty-six hyphen one eleven, sixty-six and hyphen one twelve, sixty-six, sixty-six hyphen one thirteen. Article five, retirement health insurance benefit program, sixty-six hyphen one twenty-one, sixty-six hyphen one twenty-two, and sixty-six hyphen one twenty-three, and to add section sixty-six hyphen twenty-four and sixty-six hyphen twenty-five to division one of article two of chapter sixty-six to the city code pertaining to personnel.
Have you ever heard your Alexa glitch out for a minute and repeat the same thing? I appreciate that. All right, next, number three is ordinance to amend section seven point zero three of chapter seven of the city charter pertaining to the human resources department. No one has signed up for public comment. Staff report.
Uh, council, this is a, this would be a charter change, which would not, ultimately would not be finalized until the general assembly would take it up in the spring of two thousand and twenty-four and sign by the governor, if, if a general assembly so chose. In two thousand and ten, the title of the personnel department changed from Personnel Department to Human Resources Department, and this ordinance amends section seven point oh three of the city charter to adequately reflect the title of our Human Resources Department. I would also ask that if council does approve this, that we change, there's a couple of typos in there where it should say Human Resources Department, instead it just says Human Resource. So I would just ask that that change be reflected, that it, where it references Human Resource Department, it's actually Human Resources Department. It would also update the title of the director of what is now the Personnel Department to Human Resource Director, which is, better reflects what Ms. Blevins does.
All right, thank you. Looking for a motion and a second to take action.
I move for a first reading of this ordinance by caption only with the change stated that the Human Resource Department is the Human Resources Department, with an S.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. Farnham, second by Mr. Holmes. Council discussion. And I think what, I think what you're seeing with, you know, this item, previous item, a couple of the next items is, you know, going through and, and, you know, cleaning up the way our ordinances are and, and updating our charter and ordinances so that they, they're more reflective of where we are and what we're doing. You know, and I think that's, I think that's mostly what you're seeing through, through these, so. Hearing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. Reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Ordinance twenty-three hyphen eight, an ordinance to amend section seven point oh three of chapter seven to the city charter pertaining to the Human Resources Department.
All right, thank you. Number four, an ordinance to amend section two dash six-two and two dash six-three of chapter two of the city code pertaining to conduct of meetings and order of business. No one signed up for public comment. Staff report.
Uh, council, we've had a lot of discussion in regards to conduct of meetings and how the meeting should proceed. This is an ordinance to reflect the changes that have been discussed as we've gone through this process since probably March, maybe February, February or March. So this ordinance would amend section two hyphen sixty-two and two hyphen sixty-three of chapter two to the city code pertaining to the conduct of meetings and order of business. There have been several revisions to those, to the, to those meetings. What I would like to add is, under section two sixty-three, paragraph A of ten, which is now A ten, that we change from executive session to closed session, and that it, the closed, the new closed session would be moved to go behind matters to be presented by members of the public for non-agenda items.
Okay, so the only change, other than what is presented to us in, in paper form, is that we call it closed session, and closed session comes after non-agenda public comment?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, looking for a motion and a second to take action on this.
I move the first reading of the ordinance to amend section two dash sixty-two and two dash sixty-three of chapter two with the change that we change executive session to closed session, and we move that after matters presented by members of the public for non-agenda items. By caption only.
Thank you so much. All right, so we have a motion and looking for a second.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Holmes, second by Mr. Farnham. Council discussion.
One thing that I have discussed, and I don't think that the majority of the council would agree with me on this, but I want to bring it up to see what everyone's feeling is. I like having the public comments at the beginning. That way, we know, even if what somebody wants to speak on, they don't believe is related to an agenda item, it may be related to an agenda item, and it can help inform our decision. I understand that sometimes we've had rather lengthy public comments, and there was an intention to move it to the end of the agenda for that reason, so that we can get the business done, then we can spend all evening with public comments if, if the, if members of the public are so interested. But I like having it at the beginning in case someone doesn't have the opportunity to stay for the entire meeting.
Okay. Well. I definitely understand what you're saying, and I, I agree with most of it. I think previously, the non-agenda items were at the end, and that was maybe moved up before the actual action items on the agenda, and I don't know when it was, two thousand and fourteen possibly? I think it was a Bill Hartley and Archie thing, but, but I think it's important to, yeah, leave public comment at, at every single item, and then we have the non-agenda items at the end. So if someone does come for an agenda item, and they're here for agenda item one, you know, they, we're getting them through and taking care of our regular agenda items. And, and I do like the suggestion about moving the closed session. You know, if we have that for legal personnel or a new unannounced business, that, that's at the end, so we get through all the public comments, both agenda and non-agenda items first before closed session. So I'm, I'm okay with the way it's, it's stated now.
It does leave it a little more at the, the mayor's discretion to ask for public comments on every item, because right now, it's only for certain items, the, the ones that are looking at the specific wording for it. But not every item gets the opportunity for public comment, but the mayor has the opportunity to ask for a public comment if he, if he chooses, with the risk, of course, of extending the meeting even longer than it already goes. So I, I can go along with that. It's just, I would like to encourage asking for public comment every time we can.
Hearing no further discussion, clerk, recall the roll, please.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. First reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Ordinance twenty-three hyphen fourteen, an ordinance to amend section two hyphen sixty-two and two hyphen sixty-three of the chapter two to the city code pertaining to conduct of meetings and order of business.
Thank you. Number five, ordinance twenty-three dash nine, first reading in ordinance to amend city code chapter seventy-eight, article seven, section seventy-eight dash two oh two pertaining to tax on purchased meals, levy and amount. No one has signed up for public comment.
Ordinance twenty-three hyphen nine, first reading in ordinance to amend city code chapter seventy-eight, article seven, section seventy-eight hyphen two oh two pertaining to tax on purchased meals. This pertains to the levy and the amount. The purpose of this ordinance is to increase the tax on purchased meals from seven percent to ten percent effective July first, two thousand and twenty-three. This additional funding is necessary to provide operational and capital funding for general government services, including but not limited to public safety, education, health and welfare, streets and parks, and recreation. This has been properly advertised in the Bristol Herald Courier on Sunday, April the second, two thousand and twenty-three. Citizens were given an opportunity to appear before this board at the April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three meeting to give their public comments. So staff recommends approval on first reading.
All right, thank you very much. Looking for a motion and a second for first reading of the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I move for a first reading of this ordinance to amend chapter seventy-eight for meal tax by caption only.
Second.
All right, motion from Mr. Farnham, second from Mr. Holmes. Council discussion. So I'll just ask, so refresh our memory on the, on the numbers for what each percentage increase generates in, in new revenue.
Your meals tax per percent is roughly nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Nine hundred and twenty?
Am I right about that?
That's good.
Yeah.
Hearing no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. Reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Ordinance twenty-three hyphen nine, an ordinance to amend city code chapter seventy-eight, article seven, section seventy-eight hyphen two oh two pertaining to tax on purchased meals, levy and amount.
All right, thank you very much. Number six, ordinance twenty-three dash ten, first reading in ordinance to amend city code chapter seventy-eight, article six, section seventy-eight dash one seventy-two pertaining to transient room rental tax, levy and amount. No one has signed for public comment. Staff report.
Purpose of this ordinance, council, is to increase the transient room and room rental tax from nine percent to thirteen percent effective July first, two thousand and twenty-three. This additional funding is also necessary to provide operational and capital resources for your general government services, including but not limited to public safety, education, health and welfare, streets, parks, and recreation. The room rental, the lodging tax is worth about two hundred thousand dollars per percent.
All right, thank you very much. Looking for a motion and a second for first reading of the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I move for a first reading of the ordinance for, for this chapter seventy-eight pertaining to the room tax, lodging tax, as presented by caption only.
Second.
All right, motion from Mr. Farnham, second from the vice mayor. Council discussion.
I'll just say, while we're raising this tax as well as the, the meals tax we discussed a few minutes ago, you know, ideally, it's not something that we want to do in raising any of the taxes, but this is, again, an attempt to lessen the burden, burden for the tax rates and an attempt to also lower them. We, we think that this year's going to be, we know that this year's going to be a tough year, so in future years, we hope to bring these back down, but this is to lessen the burden for our taxpayers.
I, I would also like to add, this is one of those that hopefully will, will capture more outside folks versus our own. This, as council or vice mayor Naev said, this is going to be a tough year, a rough year. Hopefully, this is one of those things that we can get some of the folks not, not living in the city from outside. Hopefully this is one of those things that we can get some of the folks not, not living in the city from outside the area to kind of chip in a bit too, so.
Along those lines, um, I have asked in some of our two-on-two sessions and it may not have, for appearance of consensus, been passed, it may have been passed to everyone. I don't want to assume one way or the other. I had asked concerning the possibility of raising this to fifteen percent so that it'll match the meals tax. That way those who are from outside of our community will pay the same fifteen percent on their rooms as people who live here are having to pay for meals. And that would give us approximately another four hundred thousand dollars, correct? If we were to do that, cause you said it's two hundred thousand per percent, correct? That we could put towards some of these other things. One, I think that I have a recommendation on the budget, which is not in the version that's presented, and perhaps a little bit towards reducing the trash collection fee.
All right. Hearing no further discussion, uh, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Knave?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. Reading the ordinance by caption only.
Ordinance twenty-three hyphen ten and ordinance to amend city code, chapter seventy-eight, article six, section seventy-eight hyphen one seventy-two pertaining to transient room rental tax levy and amount.
All right, thank you. Number seven, ordinance twenty-three dash eleven, first reading and ordinance to amend city code appendix to chapter seventy, paragraph one A pertaining to solid waste fees. Uh, we do have a couple of people who are signed up for public comment. First person I'm gonna ask is, is Ms. Smith. Did you, cause you signed up for agenda item landfill, you're good? Okay, thank you. Next person is Barbara Pittman. Yep, so, so basically if, if you've never spoken for it, so come up here, green light comes on three minutes, uh, yellow light comes on, that means you have thirty seconds left, red light comes on, that means you're out of time. So go right ahead.
Okay, I, I won't be long. Uh, this is the first time I've been to a city council meeting. I've been a citizen of Bristol since, uh, well, first nineteen seventy-seven and then moved away and came back in nineteen ninety-two and have lived here since then. I'm opposing the, the increase in the trash collection fee because I think it's unreasonable. And I think it's gonna be, uh, something that will interfere and hurt a lot of, uh, people with low incomes and also seniors. So I'd like to propose an increase no greater than, uh, thirty-three point, three percent or about ten dollars per month for households. I think the city does a very good job with, with the trash pickup.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. All right. Next person is Mr. Nup.
Good evening, everybody. Chris Nup, Shakesville Road, Bristol, Virginia. This is the first thing on the tipping fee, okay? You guys are going the right way, but it's still completely unacceptable. I don't care. The citizens of Bristol, Virginia, you've got them hurting, you've got a crush. I hear a lot of it, I get out and about and I talk a lot of people about this. If you guys pass this through, I don't know. That's a big decision, it's a lot on your conscience, all of us, all of us. That's, it's still unacceptable, period, sorry. We have stepped up over the plate, I have lived here in Bristol, biggest part of my life. We have paid for the mistakes, we're tired of it. Yes, somebody's gotta pay for it, like Randy said, somebody's gotta pay for it, but dang gun, leave us out. You've already got it on three taxes here, real estate, lodging and food. This lady said ten dollars a month, that's acceptable, it ain't good, but it's acceptable compared to some of our regions around us, what they're paying. We can handle ten dollars, but while I'm up here, on another subject. All right, that was after our last meeting. How we are wording this to get federal help, who does the wording? Do you, Randy?
I do, no, I have staff.
All right. Whoever does the wording, you think we could tell the truth? This is an environmental disaster. Even had Randy say one night, monumental disaster. You're getting close, don't mean to spit, but getting a little excited here. This is an environmental disaster, we know it, but I've never heard nobody say, nobody in this room has ever said environmental disaster. Am I right or am I wrong? One or the two? I'm right. Everybody in this room knows I'm right. It's a man-made disaster too. And the man that's fixing it, it's man-made, it's subject to go out of hell at any time. Everybody knows that too, that's why we're on top of it like we are. I hate to come up here and just gripe all the time, I wanna come up here and be happy about things, and maybe one day I will. Maybe you'll see a different side of me, I'm actually a good dude. And we got a lot of good people here in this town. So on your decision, when you vote tonight, and I know it's not what you guys wanna hear, Tamara, welcome aboard, okay? I know it's not what you wanna hear and I'm out of time, but thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'll, I'll just say for the record, Mr. Nup, whether you're mad at us or not, we still think you're a good dude.
No, I'm not mad at you guys.
No, I know, I know.
System's broke.
We like you anyway.
Appreciate it.
Uh, next person is Ms. Waldron.
My name is Linda Waldron, I am a retired school teacher, I've been in Bristol, Virginia since about nineteen seventy-six. And I raised my family here, I've worked here, paid taxes, owned homes, and, uh, it's been a pretty good experience. I did move to Washington County and I learned that Washington County does a pretty good job. And I like the way they do things. I wouldn't mind if the city merged with Washington County. And I think that, you know, that might be one solution, I don't know what that would involve, I know charter changes and things like that, but it's an idea. Because I think we're in a mess and, uh, I think we're in a financial mess. But you're also seeing a lot of discouraged, down people. We are down because we feel that something is happening to us that we have no control over and that it's unfair, it's very unfair. Thirty-three dollars is a lot to pay for trash every month. I'd rather pay twelve or fifteen, but what was proposed is out of reach for many people, it is for me. I retired in two thousand and fourteen and I still work because I just can't make it on my fixed income. So I'm gonna probably work for a while. I just moved back to Bristol, Virginia, not even three years ago, and I thought I was making a good decision, I'm a little bit worried about it now. I think we can do better, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we still have a few people who are signed up for, uh, the next ordinance items, I'll get to your names in a moment. So on number seven, staff report.
Counsel, yeah, let me, Jean, can you pull up that PowerPoint? I do need that. Counsel, I wanna go over a few things here in regards to, um, this ordinance, let me get my computer pulled back up. So, um, you know, first I want everyone here to recognize that I understand and so does counsel, we understand the, um, burden that this is gonna place on the citizens. And it's not something that we want to do, but it's something that we're gonna be forced to do because we have to be able to pay for these projects. And I see people shaking their head no as I talk about this, but I'm not exactly sure who thinks is gonna pay for these projects unless it's the citizens of the city of Bristol, Virginia. And that's the unfortunate part about the situation we find ourselves in. But I'm not sure who said it, but, um, someone is exactly right, we're paying for the mistakes that have been made in the past. And I'll tell you this, you've been paying on thirty-four million dollars worth of debt associated with that landfill for twenty-five years now. And we're still gonna be paying on thirty-four million dollars worth of debt until twenty forty-three. So when we're talking about mistakes of the past and when I said monumental disaster that often get quoted on from the Bristol, Tennessee folks, I'm not talking about the situation that we found ourselves in since twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. I'm talking about the monumental disaster that was created with this landfill in nineteen, early nineteen nineties when it first came to fruition. They went into this landfill, they borrowed twelve million dollars before they put the first bit of trash into the landfill. And then by the time they got the landfill open, they had borrowed another seven million, so they were nineteen million dollars in before the first dollar ever came into the landfill. For years, city management kept telling the city that this was gonna be a four to six million dollar income maker for the city of Bristol, Virginia. And then right when the landfill opened, either in ninety-seven, April ninety-seven or April ninety-eight, the then city manager said, we hope we break even. So now you've spent all this money on a project that you thought was gonna cause four to, or that was gonna make four to six million dollars a year, and now you're hoping to break even. At some point, someone should have said, maybe we made a bad business decision, let, let this nineteen million dollars ride and get that paid off and say, we made a mistake. But that never happened. And they kept going and they kept borrowing money for equipment that they should have been paying cash for. They leased equipment, they borrowed for equipment, they borrowed for everything, and that, now we have thirty-four million dollars of debt and absolutely nothing to show for it but a hole in the ground. And that's what we have, if you wanna go see what thirty-four million dollars gets you, go out to, uh, I wanna call it Shakesville Road, but now called Valley Drive and look at twenty-five fifteen Valley Drive and that, it shows you exactly what thirty-four million dollars gets you. But more importantly, over the course of twenty-five years, that landfill has probably cost the city, close by the time we get through with all these projects, a hundred million dollars. I mean, that is a huge sum of money. A hundred million dollars has gone into that landfill. If you wanna talk about what a hundred million dollars could do for this city, let's think about it. We're building one elementary school right now for roughly twenty-five million dollars. So that could have been four elementary schools that have been built. Or in today's world, we've got a high school that is outdated, needs updating, and high schools nowadays probably gonna cost you in the, I would say somewhere in the realm of seventy-five million dollars for a high school. And that's probably on the cheap side of things. But here we are, dealing with mistakes that have been made in the past. And there's not one person up here on this dais that wants to see trash rates increased. No one does. I don't wanna see it increased. But unfortunately, we're under a federal court order, we're under a state court order, and we have to pay for these projects. There is no other way around it. And on top of all this, we're gonna be borrowing upwards of twenty-seven million dollars to continue to pay for the projects. So now you've got thirty-four million dollars that you still haven't paid for, plus we're borrowing twenty-seven more million dollars on top of that. So sixty-one million dollars in debt associated with landfill projects. It is an absolute disgrace that we have to sit here and discuss this stuff, this stuff tonight.
Yes, it is.
An absolute disgrace. And there is no one in this room that wants more than for this city to be financially successful. But in order for us to be financially successful, we're gonna have to have a few years of pain here. And that's, there's no way around it, I wish there were, but there's not. And there's no good solution that I can provide to this city, to the city council, to the citizens, except this is gonna cost us some money for a period of time. And hopefully, I think Ms. Knave said earlier, that we hope that we'll be able to reduce some of these fees and taxes here in the near future. But it's gonna take time for us to get there. And I don't have a good solution that is gonna make everybody walk out of here tonight and feel good, it's not there. We can thank our predecessors for the situation that we're in. And we hope, and I feel like, that this staff here and this council here are making the right decisions in order to lead us out of this financial disaster that we find ourselves in. So I'm not sure why I got sidetracked on this, but I did. And I guess because I've lived this for two and a half years now and it's just something that, that I'm very passionate about. I feel like we've, we've got a long way to go, we've got a short time to get there, and unfortunately, it's just gonna be painful for us for a period of time. But counsel, I, I digressed, uh, let me talk about some changes to the city manager proposed budget, and since we're talking about the trash rates, I think this is probably the right time for me to bring this up. Previously, we had advertised that the trash rate could potentially go up to seventy-two dollars. After some review of our budgets and how we can maybe lessen that burden on our citizens, I, I am recommending tonight that we reduce, um, the rate from a seventy-two dollars as originally proposed down to sixty dollars. I know that's more than what most people behind me want to hear, uh, but I think at least twelve dollars a month is better than nothing. So how do we get there? In my city manager recommended budget, the school transfer, I recommended an eight and a half million dollar transfer to the schools. That is one million dollars more than what they have this previous, or in the current fiscal year that we're in. I'm recommending that the increase, instead of being a million dollars, be five hundred thousand dollars and the revised amount that the school system would get would be eight million, forty thousand dollars. We have a transfer to solid waste, so the transfer I recommended from the general fund was three hundred and eighty-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars. That is now being increased to nine hundred and twenty-two, or in, an increase of nine hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars for a total transfer amount of little over one point three million dollars. And this is a transfer, and how do we get to the nine twenty-two, is a transfer from our, uh, locally funded capital equipment. Our, my recommended initially nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars, we are gonna reduce that by four hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in order to, um, pay for the, um, redo, reduction in the, uh, trash rate. So our revised amount would be five hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars in locally funded capital equipment. So you may ask, how do we get to four hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars? Two hundred and ninety-two thousand, five hundred of that is coming from carryover funds that we will appropriate in fiscal year twenty-four, uh, from the real estate taxes. We have vacancy savings of fifty thousand dollars and then once again, the twenty twenty-three local capital equipment funds of seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars. So how does that impact the solid waste disposal fund? One, you have the waste collection fees, I recommended a little over five point five million dollars in fees for waste collection. The previous nine hundred and twenty-two thousand dollar adjustment, uh, revises the waste collection fees down to four point six, five million dollars. We have the transfer of the, from the general fund of increasing from three hundred and eighty-four thousand up to one point three million dollars. We've also included the DEQ funds that were funded to us last year of two million dollars. We now have those funds available to us that we can start paying or repaying ourselves for some of the projects that we have done. And then, as I mentioned previously, uh, and there, there may be a local bond issue, this is where I'm talking about borrowing money, of upwards of twenty-six million dollars to pay for these projects. We are still currently hoping that the state will kick in some funds for the city in order to help us pay for some of these projects. This is expensive on the city, it's expensive on the citizens, and, you know, it is very important that our local legislators understand what an impact this is having on our local citizens. Because an additional twenty-six million dollars is going to equate to a roughly, probably a two million dollar debt service payment a year that we're, that the citizens will have to pay for. So now we have a balanced budget in the solid waste disposal fund, I'd initially presented an unbalanced budget, but with these changes, we have a balanced budget of thirty-four point five million dollars. So our locally funded capital projects, here's how we, uh, did I hit that right? Yeah. The transfer from the general fund, once again, you see a reduction of four hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars and that's how we break out, uh, the payment for that four hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. So I can answer any questions if y'all have any as it relates to the solid waste disposal fund.
All right, let me, let me get a motion in a second, then we might have some questions for you. So looking for a motion in a second for first reading of the ordinance.
Could I say something real quick?
Hello.
Mr. Osburn. All right. Randy, you clicked a button with me right there just a minute ago. I'm not excited or anything. I'm just here trying to help get a little bit of federal help here again, too, because we're going to keep on trying to get federal. You said "financial disaster." Bam, that quick. How come none of us can say "environmental disaster"? You think that might help out a little bit more with the funding? I'm not on that side trying. I've got people that's trying, and we may have an avenue. We'll see. But it didn't take you just a minute to say "financial disaster." What about our environmental? I've lived through this crap. Biggest part of the people back here has lived through this crap. I mean, I'm right across the street from it. That don't make it any better than any, right? People on the Tennessee side getting hit just as hard. I just wanted to throw that out there. Sorry, Eric.
You're fine. I'll save you for the, for the, for the budget item, because I already asked you on this one, so we're, we're going to keep going. Looking for a motion in a second. If it's going to be by caption only or in full.
Mr. Mayor, I move for first reading of this ordinance as presented by caption only pertaining to solid waste fees.
Second.
All right. Motion for Mr. Farnham, second for Mr. Holmes. Counsel discussion. I'll start. First, on, on federal funding. You know, it is, at this point, well documented that we asked for a little bit over $50 million, you know, from, from our two senators. I was very disappointed that we didn't, not only did we not get help, they, you know, flat-out rejected us and said, "You can't do it, no way to do it." Not, you know, they didn't come back and say, "Hey, maybe we could do a little bit of it, we can give you," you know, nothing. So incredibly disappointed, you know. But I, I can't speak for the city as a whole, but I know I've just today signed a couple letters to send to people in the federal government, and there'll be some more information on that about, you know, basically coming with our hat in our hand. We need money. We need money. But in the meantime, you know, the federal government is very slow-moving. They, they've not passed their budget, so we can't, we can't bank on getting money from the federal government to pay for this. You know, at the end of the day, the main source of income for the, for the landfill, for solid waste, is local funding, local funding sources, and that is taxpayers. And that is, that is people who get trash picked up. So, you know, I, I take no joy in having to pay more for my trash to get picked up. I don't think anybody up here does. I don't want to put a burden on anyone. But at the end of the day, we have very limited options for what we do and how we pay for it, and these, these are things that are time-sensitive, and we don't, we don't have a choice. You know, no, no one up here is excited, no one up here is having a good time. But it is something that we have to find a way to, find a way to pay for. And I don't love it, but that's where I'm, where I'm at.
Well, I think I'll say, obviously, we're all, you know, first ones on the list. If, if there's more revenue that will come in from the state, obviously, you know, we're, yeah, I'd be first to say, let's meet, again, if we have additional revenues that come in, that right now looks like it's a zero, but could still happen. Obviously, we're here to, you know, try to amend that, amend that ordinance, amend the, the fee, you know, if new revenues come in. Now, there may not be any. But the city manager was exactly right, that this was sold as a business idea, an enterprise fund, back in the 90s. You know, we'll, we'll borrow this money, and we'll start a landfill, and it's going to create four to six million dollars of additional revenue every year, and with that money, we'll be able to buy police cars and build new schools and, and, well, even more recently, another idea like that was sold. It was, "Let's buy a mountain and move a mountain and build a Cabela's building, and it's going to create millions of new revenue." And we saw from the financial report earlier, we're at a deficit every year. The landfill was at a deficit every year. They just kept borrowing. So it's, it's not, it's not a good situation. Now, obviously, I, I think it was right, there was someone else who said it. It's, it's like a bump in the road, it's a big bump in the road financially, and I think we're going to have a few tough years, probably at least the next two. Obviously, we've heard from everyone, and we know it, too, that we have to do these projects. We can't keep having the issues we've been having over at the landfill. We've been talking about it for over two years now. And, you know, it, it's not like we just want to do the projects right away as well. There's, there's a court order. A judge in court said, "You have to do this in the next, what, 12, 18 months." So, you know, it's not fun to say, but the bills have come due, and we have to pay the bills. It's not fun, but I'm afraid we have no other choice.
I'll jump in here. I'm, I'm still hopeful that we can get some, some help from the state. Nothing's, nothing's sure. We don't know. The budget, the state budget is likely not to be finalized until the last week or two of June, so we, we can't, can't depend on that. We can, we can hope for it, but we can't depend on it at this point. And as to the federal funding, I hope that we, we need to continue to pursue that, any avenue we can, whether it's directly funding for these projects, or finding ways to put in requests for other things that the city has to pay for, so we can free up funding for these projects. However, we need to approach this, however creative we need to be, we need to turn over every stone we can. I know our staff is working hard to do that, but it's, the job's not done, obviously, so we're going to keep working on this.
I'll just add, you know, when we talked about $72, even myself, I was like, how are we going to afford $72 a month for trash? Trying to think through that. And then, I'm thankful that we were able to at least get it down to 60. I know that is still super high, and, and I agree with a lot of what you said, Mr. Nave. It's, it's going to be tough on, on all of us. And, but my hope is, you know, this is a, a short time, hopefully, that it's going to be about, hopefully, a year or so, and then we can start looking at bringing them back down. And I'm still hopeful and holding out that we will get additional funding from the state and federal funding. And if we do, then we can immediately try to start looking at how we can help you all again, and help all of us in bringing those tax, bringing the trash rates back down.
Well, never mind.
Personally, I think that our rate should be no higher than 55. I have made some specific recommendations to be able to make that happen. I, I know that each of you was copied on, on those recommendations. We can get into what those recommendations are during the later full-budget process, but I think we should have, we should split the difference between the original recommendation and the current fee, and go no higher than 55, and then lower it later on if and when we get additional help.
Very good. Hearing no further discussion, if the clerk would call the roll, please.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
Pollard?
No.
Osborne?
Yes. All right. Reading the ordinance by caption only.
Ordinance 23 hyphen 11, an ordinance to amend City Code appendix to Chapter 70, Paragraph 1A pertaining to solid waste fees.
All right, thank you. Number eight, ordinance 23 dash 12, first reading budget ordinance for fiscal year 2023, 2024. Public comments. Ms. Smith, did you, did you have something else you wanted to add?
I thought of some things that I had wanted, Glenda Smith, again. I just thought of some things that I forgot to say before, and that I really feel like this increase, there's a disproportionate amount falling on seniors that are on fixed incomes, who generate virtually no trash. Probably six of us on a block don't even fill up one barrel a week. And there are plenty of people that also have homes in other states and only come here for a couple of months out of the year, and they're going to end up having to pay this astronomical fee for times they're not even here using it at all. And it just feels like there's other things that we can do to try and save money. I know, I feel like the street sweeper is the biggest waste of money that the city has, because they just drive down the middle of the street and just brush, drive around piles of grass, and drive around every, all this other junk that's all over the street. I, I don't know why we can't take that vehicle and put it, take it out of service, save the gas, take that person and put them somewhere else, and put them to better use. It just, a lot of little things like that, that, and the other thing was, can't we have people figure out a way to maybe charge the people who use the most, pay the most? And there are people that every week, they, their, their trash cans are overflowing, and they've got stuff piled on both sides of it, and they just generate so much, you know, there's mattresses and furniture and everything, especially rental properties, where they're turning them over all the time, and they're always putting all their junk out on the street. And then they're paying the same amount as the person that's got one little kitchen trash bag once a week. And sometimes, some of my neighbors don't even put their trash can out but once a month. And so, and a lot of these people are struggling to pay their taxes and stuff already. And a $72, even a $55 a month fee is a huge proportion of someone who's living on $800 to $1,000 a month. That may make the difference between whether they can leave their heat on, whether they can eat, whether they can drive their car. Whereas some other people, well, oh, gosh, I won't get my latte this, you know, I'll have to cut back, I won't be able to buy as many clothes this month or whatever. But I, I just really feel like sometimes you guys don't realize what a huge burden this is going to put on the community, especially people on fixed incomes.
Thank you very much.
One, going back to the, the solid waste fee, there was something that I wanted to bring up, just so we stated, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's about the program, and I believe it's through, down at the Commissioner of Revenue's office regarding low-income and senior citizens.
Yes. Under City Code 70 hyphen 24, it's an exemption for elderly and disabled people. So solid waste user fee shall be, fee relief shall be provided to property owners at least 65 years of age, or anyone found to be permanently and totally disabled as defined in Code of Virginia, Section 58.1 hyphen 3217, provided the applicant's income is at or below the current federal poverty guidelines. And if you do qualify at the Commissioner of Revenue's office, that your fee would be one-third of whatever the trash rate fee is. So if the fee does go to $60 eventually, it appears it's passed on the first reading, the fee for that person would be $20 a month.
Okay. Thank you for reading that. I think that's a, a program that we have that's good, and not a lot of people know about that in the city.
All right, thank you. Next person who signed up for public comment on the budget ordinance is, is Monica. I know you told me last time how to say your last name, and I still don't remember, so I'm avoiding it.
Okay. My name is Monica Daddio, and I'm a Bristol resident on Spurgeon Lane. And it's good to know that you're willing to give back to the citizens if we do get any kind of funding, whether it's state, wherever it comes from, that, that's good. But my, my concern is that most people, like the previous woman said, were on fixed incomes. And so my thought is, everybody that works for the city, gets city money through the taxpayers, should also be on a fixed income. There should be no raises, no bonuses, no new jobs created. So I just hope that you guys are on board with that, so then we're all in this together, and we're all treated equally in that matter. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person who signed up on this is Dr. Perigin.
So I'm going to have a little egg on my face, and I hate to admit it, but I agree with almost everything that Mr. Reed said, so I guess that is officially on the record. Good evening. Let me actually begin by expressing my gratitude on behalf of our school board and our entire staff for your recent support of Bristol, Virginia Public Schools. The appreciation is especially warranted because of the difficult financial constraints that our city is experiencing and finds itself in. From approving the funding mechanism, to build a new school, to increasing our budget by 18 and a half percent over the last two years, if this budget is indeed approved as presented, it's obvious that each of you understand that, that an investment in our students and Bristol's future is a sound investment. So also, on behalf of our students, I want to say thank you. However, I would be remiss to add that the investment the city has made in our schools recently was long overdue, I think everyone can agree to that, and related to need, and not just frivolous desires. For example, you may have known across Bristol today, parts of Bristol had a little thunder shower. Well, that happened in the Highland View area, and our gym flooded, which is just proof positive that building a new school is, should have occurred long before any of you were ever elected. Additionally, the 18 and a half percent appropriation increase, again, if this budget is approved, is not related to flippant, flippant requests on our part, but actually a result of increases that have been required by the Commonwealth of Virginia as part of required local effort and the, and, and required local match. During this same two-year period that we've received the 18, or will receive the 18 and a half percent increase, the state has actually said that the city's minimum requirement would have went up by 23%. So even though we appreciate the 18 and a half percent, it still doesn't meet what the state says the city should be increasing their appropriations to schools for. So while I understand the dire straits the city finds itself in currently, I must confess that I'm disappointed that the budget that you will consider tonight does not include the full increase that was collaboratively, collaboratively discussed by city and school staff. The idea that we had behind the $1 million increase was to provide some breathing room between our actual local appropriation and the minimum funding amount that is required by the Commonwealth of Virginia. And so, also to protect us, because we know that our local composite index will be going up in the next biennium, and so that requirement will also go up as well. And so the shift from the $1 million to this $500,000 recommendation will actually bring us closer to the bare minimum, minimum than we've ever been in the history of the city. And so please see the handout that I, that I've shared with you, and it will detail that information specifically. The reduction will all but prevent us from inventing, investing in any of the capital needs that still remain at our Virginia High School, Virginia Middle School in Van Pelt, and will seriously affect our ability to provide the raises that the state will provide to our teachers once the state budget is approved. So you combine that with our local composite index increase next year, the failure to address the gap that we have now will only have future and possibly even more painful impacts on increases for taxes and fees in the future. So I respectfully ask that city council consider fully funding the collaborative appropriation request that was submitted by our combined staffs. It is time that our schools and students, which are the city's brightest asset and most promising future, quit being short-changed because, as Mr. Reed's mentioned, mistakes that have been made in the past. You know, you look at the budget recommendation that's been made tonight, I, I just ask that you don't balance this budget on the backs of our babies. That is our most important asset, and the, the biggest bulk of that change to the budget is in our schools. And I just ask that you reconsider that, and certainly we understand the needs that the city has, but our, our city's future is at stake, and I hope that you will consider that request. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Mr. Alvis.
Good evening, Mayor Osborne, council members. Randy Alvis with the Bristol, Virginia School Board. Just got a few points I'd just like to share. First of all, the, the $1 million request that was made, that was a number that was identified collaboratively, collaboratively, but, you know, and actually suggested by city staff. You know, that, it, that's what was suggested to us, so, you know, you could feel like that's money in the bank. You know, when we're making, when we made our budget, we, we felt like we could count on that, because that's, we didn't have to come and ask for it, that's what was suggested that we do. Secondly, we found out about this yesterday. You know, our school board didn't have a chance to, to talk at our last meeting, that, hey, this is what's happening, how's that going to affect us, how's that going to affect our budget? You know, what, what do we have to try to do to make this work? You know, I think that the decision should be made in a collaborative, collaborative manner, considering the strong relationship our bodies have developed over the last couple of years. Considering we'll be transitioning to a new superintendent over the summer, collaboration on the budget between elected officials is even more important. You know, we really haven't had a joint meeting since before COVID. You know, we really haven't had a joint meeting since before COVID. It's, it's time we do that. Your goals, our goals, you know, we need to get together and, and just have a sit-down and, and see where we want to go together and see how we can get through issues just like this. So, you know, in closing, you know, I would request that the council approve, approve this budget with the one million dollar increased appropriation to our schools and that a date be set for us to meet jointly to, to discuss any potential changes. You know, as Dr. Perigin stated, depending on, so if you look at the, at the, at the senate budget, the house budget and the governor's budget, you know, they're, they're at three different levels. At the high end with the eight hundred thousand dollar, or the eight billion dollar appropriation that the city gives us, there's some debt that comes off of that. I mean, that already takes us down to seven point seven million dollars and that's the senate budget. So depending on what budget we have, the, the, the risk is, is losing matching funds to do things with the city. So not only will it cost us the money that we don't, that we don't have, but it's going to cost us more money that we're not going to get because we don't have it to match. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Uh, all right, so we are looking for a motion of second to take action. This can be in full or by caption only.
Mr. Mayor, I move for first reading of this budget ordinance for fiscal year 2023, 2024 as presented by caption only.
Second.
All right, motion from Mr. Farnham, second from Mr. Holmes, council discussion.
Counsel, I'll just reiterate, this is where staff kind of looks for consensus on if there's any changes you all are willing to make to the budget. There wouldn't be a formal vote, we're just looking for a consensus that at least three of you want to move in a certain direction.
Okay, well, as, as for the, as for the schools, I appreciate you all being here this evening. I do think we need to have a joint meeting. Obviously, I think we've, under a time crunch to pass this budget with first reading and second reading. So I, I, I do want to, us to continue to communicate and have a meeting, I don't know when that would be, probably sometime in the summer when there's a new superintendent, just to make sure we're collaborating and communicating. And, and I just, again, I appreciate you all being here, I just want to reiterate, you know, where we're at as a city. You know, whether the, it's the budget of seven point four, seven point three, or seven point seven as, for the required local effort from the state, you know, we are cutting it close. Now, I think this is my fifth budget I voted on and I don't think we've ever reduced funding. Now, maybe the COVID year, the COVID year when stuff shut down in March and we had the budget and we had to change everything at the last minute. But other than that, you know, I think the majority of us who have been here have always supported giving more funding to the school system. But, you know, it was mentioned that, yeah, we're cutting it close, depending on, you know, how much we're giving the schools. A lot of citizens are cutting it close and we've talked about raising trash rates and meal tax and people are paying more for gas and groceries and electric bill and, so yeah, a lot of people are cutting it close and we'll, we'll give all we can, I just don't think there's an additional million dollars that we can give over last year, but we are, you know, looking at this budget that gives an additional five hundred thousand. And I was actually one who said, I don't think we can do that five hundred thousand, I think we need to do about two fifty. But I'm happy to be able to fund the schools more than we did last year. So that, that's kind of where I'm at. I do want to say I appreciate you all coming here, I do think we need to communicate more going forward, especially as a new superintendent comes aboard. And I, I want to, you know, pose the question, moving on to another subject to the council, about some of our outside agencies and, and the, our DMO and what everyone's thoughts are on that.
I was gonna bring up that as well if no one else did. The presentation that we saw a little while back from Explore Bristol was rather impressive. I'm sure that many of those who have been attending our meetings over the past several years may have been disappointed at the track record of presentations from our current DMO. Each year they have said, give us another chance, we'll do better. Well, it seems that many of those currently on council, as well as those in the past on council, have given them that chance and have given them that chance again, and have given them that chance again. And now we have a valid alternative with, which has a proven track record of, of performance. So what, what I'm thinking of, I believe this is the, maybe the consensus of council, if it's okay for me to try to speak for others when I can't actually do that. But I think that it may be our desire to move from our current DMO to Explore Bristol, changing the contribution rate from one twenty-six thousand to a hundred thousand because that's their buy-in level. And then provide twenty thousand to, potentially provide twenty thousand dollars to Tri-Cities Airport for matching funds for a grant. And then provide the balance of six thousand to Believe in Bristol for fireworks.
Uh, I agree, and you know, those are, Mr. Pollard, numbers that, that, you know, I think we've all discussed internally. And I think that, you know, I also don't want to speak for everyone. I think that those would be the levels that we would be comfortable at, you know, to, to give a different DMO and an opportunity to market Bristol to, to tourists and the people who are coming here to spend money. You know, Explore Bristol has provided us with, you know, some, some very exciting opportunities, you know, they've actually been, you know, with us, with us in the previous years not funding Explore Bristol at all, they've been marketing Bristol, Virginia. You know, so they will do a good job, I believe. You know, I appreciate the, the years of time that we have had with Discover Bristol as our DMO, you know, but, but, you know, it's nothing personal, I like every, every single person at Discover Bristol, every single person at the chamber, they're all good people, it's nothing personal, but, you know, sometimes you have to go in a different direction. And, and I feel like that might be in the best interest of being stewards of taxpayer dollars. As far as, you know, having a DMO, having tourism, I think that that would be the best direction to go in. And you are correct, I believe the hundred thousand is, is where we should be. I'm excited about that twenty thousand dollars moving over to Tri-Cities Airport, potentially to get us a new, a new destination from Tri-Cities, which I think will help with people who are traveling here for business and traveling to the Midwest for business. And I'm really excited about moving a six thousand dollars over to Believe in Bristol. We'll actually be able for the first time in a couple of years to see fireworks return to our downtown for the Fourth of July. That means a whole lot to people. Because Believe Us, we have, we've heard about it, past couple of years we've not had fireworks. So, you know, I think, I think that's exciting. So, again, I don't, I don't want to speak for everyone, but I think that we're all kind of on the same page.
Well.
Destination marketing organization, DMO.
I'll, I'll jump in here and just kind of reiterate what the first two of you said. I, I do think that we have to be very smart with the money we spend and making sure that we're getting what we're paying for is, is important any year, it's taxpayer money, but this year especially. And if we can spend twenty-six thousand dollars less and get, in my mind, at least significantly more, it, it is a wise decision. I hate, I hate to jump ship on, on folks, I hate that we've got relationships there, they're great people there, but I do think that the, the taxpayer money is, is the paramount issue here. So I think making sure that we're spending it wisely is important. Shifting gears a little bit, I, I want to thank the, the school board members and the school superintendent for being here. I, I do appreciate that as school board members, you probably have the most thankless job in the Commonwealth. You get to set budgets, you get to spend money, but you don't get to raise money, so you have to come to us for, for assistance. I, I appreciate that dynamic there. I, I will say that with the, the whole overall, whole overall dynamic of the city that we're facing right now, I do, I do think that the five hundred dollar increase in funding this year does make the most sense with where we're at financially, that the, the trash rate is still, still too high at sixty, but at least we can bring it down to sixty from that seventy-two. So I, I hope we can, as we talked about in the previous section, do more on that, but at least that gets us rolling in the right direction.
And I'll just add, I am not, as far as for the DMO conversation, I have tried to stay out of that conversation due to my position in the state, working for Virginia Tourism Corporation. I'm a funder for a DMO, so they apply for our grants and it's part of that funding process, so I've tried to stay out of that conversation. As far as the other parts of that funding, the twenty thousand for the airport, I think we are a, I think it's a one-seventh owner of the airport. And so we, in past years, have not done our part in being, in, been involved in that. And so I think that's important. And then, excited about the fireworks, I think that's exciting as well. And then I'll just add also, thank you to Dr. Perigin and our school board members for being here tonight. I'll tell you, in looking at this budget and cutting everybody down to bare minimum, it's been really tough. And so we still have tough decisions ahead of us to make. I'm happy that we can still increase from what you got last year. And then again, hopefully we're banking on getting some state and federal funding so we can come back and, and make up some of these differences.
I would like to reiterate that the Chamber of Commerce is a great advocate for our local businesses. We may have been disappointed with the Discover Bristol's results for the city, but they are a great advocate for our local businesses and we are very glad to have them.
And just to follow up on that, we, we do love the Chamber and, you know, one thing that's important to remember for everyone who's in the audience and, and listening at home, you know, the Discover Bristol and the Chamber are two separate entities, you know, for, for their legal purposes, you know, and we do, obviously we pay, our Chamber dues as we're required to do as a member of the Chamber, so, you know, we will continue our relationship with the Chamber of Commerce, obviously, in perpetuity, because we, they do a lot of good work with our businesses. Mr. City Manager, do you think you have a consensus on things?
Yeah, let me just reiterate what I think I've heard to make sure everybody's on the same page. What I have heard is, we would switch our DMO from Discover Bristol to Explore Bristol, fund Explore Bristol at a hundred thousand dollars. We would also set aside twenty thousand dollars for the Tri-Cities Airport in the event they are awarding a grant through the FAA that would allow them to attract additional service from Tri-Cities Airport to Chicago. And then six thousand dollars would go to Believe in Bristol. And then I believe I have a consensus here that council would propose increasing the school funding by five hundred thousand dollars from last year's budget, that we would transfer one point three million dollars to the Solid Waste Disposal Fund and we would reduce our locally funded capital equipment by four hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars in order to reduce the trash rate from seventy-two dollars to sixty dollars, I believe is what I've heard tonight.
I'm wondering if maybe we could have some additional discussion since the, now that we've concluded, largely concluded the DMO discussion, I would like to make some other recommendations. Specifically, I would like to recommend that we discuss the cigarette tax. When I was looking into, in running some numbers, looking into some other localities, it seems that slightly higher rates are common in our area. Washington County is a poor comparison because they've, they are one of the very few localities that's chosen not to have a cigarette tax. However, if we compare our sales tax plus cigarette tax with Bristol, Tennessee, a, a tax of roughly twenty-five cents a pack would be, make it roughly equivalent for a six dollar pack of cigarettes. I don't smoke myself, I don't know if that's the typical going rate, I've seen that on signs, so that's largely what I was going by there. The twenty-five cents is what the city of Norton uses. City of Radford uses a forty cent rate. I'm only suggesting that we consider a twenty-five cent rate because that would be roughly equivalent on a six dollar pack of cigarettes with the Bristol, Tennessee sales tax. We'll, we'll remain competitive locally. I'm also, would like to consider discussing raising the admission tax from five percent to seven percent. Some members of the council have suggested that if we're going to do it, we need to do it now before we have the influx of entertainment venues coming in shortly. The cigarette tax based on our current revenue projections on, in the budget should give us an increase of, of roughly a hundred and eighty-nine thousand. And an increase in the admission tax of five percent to seven percent should give us an increase of roughly thirty-eight thousand. I would also like to ask for a budget for a dedicated city attorney with budget comparable to the assistant city manager.
So I'll, I'll jump in on, on the two tax increases that, that you discussed. You know, I have, I have no problem with, with recommending raising the cigarette tax. I, I think the only, the only danger, you know, well, it's not really a danger, I think the only concern I have with it is, as you've seen, except for that one year when everybody all of a sudden started stress smoking, is the cigarette tax continues to go down year over year. So, you know, I mean, we, we can raise the taxes on it, but, but the revenue line item in terms of raw numbers will, will probably continue to go down overall. I think that's something that we should look at and discuss is how to, how to lobby the state to, to include vaping products as a taxable item like, like cigarettes are. Because I don't think that, I don't think everybody stopped smoking, I think they've switched to vaping like, like CFO said. You know, I, I think that if we could find a way to tax that at the same rate that we're taxing cigarettes, that might help that budget line item. You know, being a Dillon Rule state, I don't know how we could do that. But, but as far as actually raising the cigarette tax, I think it'd be, I think it'd be worthwhile to look at that, as well as the admissions tax, because, you know, we will, you know, you saw the jump on the, the quarterly financial report for admissions tax collection. I think this would be the year to do it. Now, as far as, as far as timing though, you know, we, we might have to come back and look at those items separately, you know, after the budget in whole is, is passed, you know, because we have to have this budget passed by a certain time to be in accordance with state law. But I, but I do agree that cigarette tax and admissions tax should be looked at and reassessed. I don't know if I bored everybody out of the room, but everybody just left all of a sudden when I started talking. But no, I'm, I'm in agreement with you on, we need to, we need to look at both of those as, as potential increases, you know, especially this year where we've, you know, we, we've increased some other taxes and, and, you know, the cigarette tax and, and the admissions tax are both things that are purely voluntary, I guess is the, is the way to say it, purely optional. You know, whereas, you know, like the, the meals tax is not optional, you have to be able to eat, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I think that's a good idea about checking with the state regarding the cigarette tax and then new types of vaping products, because we have more vape stores than we do car washes, I mean, they're neck and neck, but as far as the, the budget as a whole, I think, I guess I'm concerned about too many changes. I mean, I know we've got a, we've got the real estate tax bills out already, but we also are at a point where Bvu does our billing for the, for the trash and we're at a point where we need to let them know, you know, pretty soon about that. So I, I guess I'm, I do understand the, the So I guess I'm, I do understand the, the logic of trying to find some revenue somewhere else, if, if it ultimately would offset on the, the trash rate, but I guess I'm also concerned about, do we have any more time? And, or should we, you know, go as presented with that? I mean, we sort of already did with the trash rate, but, but I like the idea about the, the state with the cigarette tax and then everything else mentioned so far.
Yeah, and I'll add to that, too. I'm not opposed to the emissions tax, I mean, going up some on that. I think that in recently buying tickets for something, I didn't pay attention, I paid all kinds of fees when I bought them through StubHub or Ticketmaster. So I think that when you're purchasing a ticket, you're going to buy it, you're going to, you know there's going to be fees on there, so you don't really pay attention to that. But as Councilman Farnham said, I'm not sure about the timeline if we want to discuss some of these further. I don't know if we have the time to do that. So it might be a consideration for, for future.
Yeah, counsel, I would caution extending, passing the budget beyond May 30th. Our charter and our states that an ordinance takes effect 30 days after its passage, after the second reading, unless there's an emergency measure. But our also, our emergency measure talks about what is an emergency, and it's for the immediate preservation of the public, peace, property, health, or safety, or for providing for the operation of a municipal department. So I'm not exactly sure, I think there's an argument that can be made that passing a budget is for the operation of multiple municipal departments, but also, does it truly rise to the level of an emergency if it's at that point? So I have some concerns about passing a budget, you know, once you get into June. I know we've done it in the past. I think we've done it two times in the past since I've been here, but I do have some concerns about saying that it's an emergency.
Just to piggyback on what was said about the emission tax, so I do think that could be something that we maybe look at after July 1st, but maybe we can have some analysis on, on what other localities have, and maybe it's not just surrounding localities in this area, but in other parts, you know, larger cities around us. Because I don't think in the next, you know, few months to six months to 12 months, we'll have many large events like that, but there will be more coming in the future, and that number, I think, will go up over the next several years.
And counsel, I will tell you that under Title 58.1 hyphen 1021.02, there is a discussion about taxation on nicotine products. I have sent that and some amendments to the Commissioner of Revenue to see if they, if the commissioner knows if those can be taxed. It seems like there may be an exclusion if it's, if it's regulated under the FDA, so I'm not exactly sure what's regulated under the FDA, if the vaping products are regulated under the FDA, but I have sent her some information under Virginia Code. It appears that there may be an, an opportunity for taxing some vaping products, but I will get more information from her hopefully tomorrow or Thursday.
I think that'd be ideal. I mean, because, like I said, even if we go back and raise the cigarette tax, it's going to continue to go down as people move to those products, you know, year over year for the most part, so.
So it sounds like, I just want to make sure I'm not doing something that I shouldn't or doing something that y'all don't want me to do. It sounds like there's a consensus to look at admissions tax and, what's it, the lodging tax?
Cigarette tax.
Cigarette tax, I'm sorry. And probably bring that back to you sometime June or July after we get some more information. Is that what I understand from the majority of council?
That'd be good.
Okay.
All right. Hearing no further discussion, I believe we have a motion from Mr. Farnham and a second from Mr. Holmes for first reading by caption only. Clerk, please call the roll.
I would, I would.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I think we need to make that motion with the recommended changes that have been discussed tonight. Is that how we've done that in the past? Okay.
We can do that. So, so do you all want to withdraw your second and your motion?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to make a new motion in a second?
Yes, I'll make the motion to, for first reading of this budget, budget ordinance for fiscal year 23, 24, with the changes that were discussed regarding our DMO and the funding involved with that and for the airport and Believe in Bristol, and the schools being at the revised amount of $8,400,000 as presented here.
And does that also include using the carryover funds from the local?
And, and using the carrier.
And the transfer, increase and transfer to the solid waste?
And that, yes.
Yes, okay.
And was that by caption only?
By caption only.
That sounds, that sounds like a whole lot of leading questions. So we have a motion, a second, for what he said, by caption only. Please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Knave?
Yes.
Pollard?
No.
Osborne?
Yes.
Reading the ordinance by caption only.
Ordinance 23 hyphen 12, budget, budget ordinance for fiscal year 2023, 2024, making general fund, community development block, block grant fund, solid waste disposal enterprise fund, local funded capital projects fund, state and federal funded capital projects fund, Commonwealth Attorney Federal Revenue Sharing Fund, Transit Enterprise Fund, Flexible Spending Fund, Asset Forfeiture Fund, COVID-19 Federal Funds Fund, School Operating Fund, School Textbook Fund, School Food Service Fund, School Local Capital Projects Fund, and School Construction Fund appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 30, 2024 in the following amounts. General Fund, $65,460,466. Community Development Block Grant Fund, $420,000. Solid Waste Disposal Enterprise Fund, $37,236,915. Local Funded Capital Projects Fund, $538,280. Oh. Was that right? Expenditure, I'm sorry. So we'll strike that, it'd be $960,600. State and Federal Funded Capital Projects Fund, $16,197,792. Commonwealth Attorney Federal Revenue Sharing Fund, $35,300. Transit Enterprise Fund, $1,064,549. Flexible Spending Fund, $28,500. Asset Forfeiture Fund, $150,600. COVID-19 Federal Funds, $2,195,560. School Operating Fund, we currently have, $41,205,198. That will be amended to reflect the change the council suggested tonight. School Textbook Fund, $1,428,780. School Food Service Fund, $2,494,952. School Local Capital Projects Fund, $797,904. School Construction Fund, $2,102,214. And regulating payments out of the city treasury and also fixing the tax rate on real and personal property for fiscal year 2024.
All right. Thank you very much. Next item is the consent agenda. What's the pleasure, counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right. Motion from Mr. Farnham, second from the Vice Mayor. Please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Knave?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
There being no further business, we stand adjourned.